Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting of Salina School District for June the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance extends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I believe, Mr. Summer, it is time to adopt a new member to the Board of Education.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the State of Ohio and the Constitution of the United States and that you will faithfully perform and discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Salina City School District in Mercer County, Ohio?
I do.
Congratulations.
Mr. Summer, roll call, please. Did the healthcare thing not work out earlier?
Yes, decline for both.
Decline for both.
Thank you.
Roll call. Mrs. Voorhees.
Here.
Mr. Black.
Here.
Mr. Sal.
Here.
Mrs. Gingrich.
Here.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Huber, Mrs. Gingrich. Mr. Summer. Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich.
Aye.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees.
Yes.
Mr. Sal.
Yes.
Looks like no one has signed in to address us as a member of the public. So I guess we'll go on to approval of the consensus agendas. If I don't through it, are there any comments or anything to, I guess we can remove later?
As we move forward with that, before we have the motion, there are three items that will be included in the consensus agenda. So we do have an addendum as the last page of the agenda here. Item A nine, B three and four, and C sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ken.
Did we get a motion?
Motion proof.
I move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Voorhees, Mr. Huber, roll call, please.
Not yet.
Oh, right. Gotcha. Mr. Summer.
Okay, as part of my report, I'm asking you to approve the minutes of the May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting, May twenty first, June second, and June eighth, two thousand and twenty special board meetings. Asking you to approve the May two thousand and twenty financial summary report showing revenues of just over two point four million and expenditures of just over three point three million. Asking you to approve the investment control report for May two thousand and twenty with an overall balance of twelve point five nine million. Asking you to approve the SM two for May of two thousand and twenty. Asking you to approve the checks written for May two thousand and twenty of two point eight eight seven ninety. Item six is authorize myself to supplement appropriations as needed and make necessary appropriation budget modifications, including any advances and transfers to close the financial books for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. When the minutes are actually compiled, the listing will be included in there. And just for your reference, this is a compliance issue to get the books closed a year in. Item seven, consider approval of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty one temporary appropriations to be equal to one hundred percent of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty appropriations for all accounts, which will require the payment of bills from July first, two thousand and twenty until the permanent appropriations are approved. Again, this is another compliance issue. We don't do this, we can't spend any money after July one, so. Item eight is to accept the following donations, six hundred dollars from the Salina Rotary Pursue the Graduation Sign and eight hundred dollars from the Grand Lake Rotary for the graduation sign in front of the high school. And then item nine is the addendum item, and it's just the school district insurance renewal with the Ohio School Plan through Stali Insurance Agency. We've been with them for years. This premium is just over eighty thousand dollars for the year. Last year's premium was seventy nine thousand. But I do want to point out that they did give us a refund of almost thirty five hundred dollars during the pandemic because we weren't driving our muscles, so they gave us a refund.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. Also thank you to Salina Rotary and Grand Lake Rotary, that was kind of them. Any questions for Mr. Summer regarding the treasures report? If not, Dr. Ken.
Moving forward with classified personnel, asking you to accept the resignation due to retirement of Lynn Crookman, teacher assistant at the intermediate school. Also recommend you to approve to hire the following two thousand and twenty summer workers as needed, Denise Berry, Karen Knackey, Karen Schott, Jason Andrew, Erin Bowser, John Higgins. And on the addendum, items three and four, asking you to approve the following Head Start personnel for the summer transition program. That money's coming from the CARES Act at twenty dollars per hour as needed, Pam Raisavir, Sinar Yani, Ashley Bilger, Tracy Brewer, Cindy Bowser, Jane Mauer, Kirsten Fueling, Rosita Edgier, and Betsy Steinbruner. And number four, approve a Head Start administrative stipend of eleven hundred dollars and six, eleven hundred sixty dollars for the summer transition program for Amy Esser, Sandy Stammen, Angie Stevenson, and Whitney Langston.
Any questions for Mrs. Esser? She is here. Is CARES Act, is that a new thing or not?
No, that's the relief act that came out of COVID, out of the federal government.
Right. Anyone else?
Next, we have three resolutions we're asking you to approve. First, a resolution between Salina City Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees. It provides for a reduction in the number of classified employees in the school district. This is a reduction of the study hall position at the high school, where we look to be able to move all the students into classes that are being taught by certified individuals. The second recommendation to accept the lowest and best bid for McKernan Brothers for milk for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one school year. And the third is to approve to keep the A lunch prices the same for the two thousand and twenty school year. So those would be the same as they were this past school year, no increase in lunch prices.
Questions regarding the resolutions?
Under certified personnel, we're asking you to approve to accept the resignations of Keith Westrick. He's a halftime engineering and technology teacher at TriStar. And also the resignation of Michelle Langmeyer. She was on a job share for a quarter of the day with family in consumer science at the high school. Next, we're asking you to approve one-year contracts for Taylor Hesse. She'll be taking the halftime engineering technology at TriStar. And Ashley Lockdefeld, she'll be the new math teacher at the high school. We're asking you to approve a change of contract for Emily Shavoni. She's going from preschool speech language pathologist to the speech and language pathologist at the elementary school for this year. Asking you to approve the following personnel for teaching extended school year services, Olivia Graber, Emily Shavoni, Denise Herholszer, Taylor Steiki, Mark Hailey, and Angela West. Number seven, we're asking you to approve Jill Harris for summer tutoring, summer tutoring of EL at twenty four dollars per hour up to eight hours per month. Then we're asking you to approve the following extended days, ten days for Andy Mikecelle as he's going to be the new middle school principal. Ten extended days for Jen Burney, she's our new intermediate school principal. And twelve days for Wendy Gabus, guidance counselor at the high school as she's doing schedules through not having any students this last nine weeks and trying to get those schedules all completed for students for the new school year. Then we have a couple.
Is Burney going to arrive in Salina?
She'll be starting her first date of employment is officially August the first, so that'll give her days between and before then to make up and get prepared since she's ready to roll for August. Asking you to accept the resignations of Stuart Watson, varsity assistant football coach, and also the resignation of Brian Felver as girls varsity soccer assistant coach. Asking you to approve the following supplemental contract, Derek Gunning, assistant football coach. And then we're asking you to approve stipend payments per the master agreement for the following teachers who have completed the requirements of the resident educator committee. April Elbers, Lisa By, Wendy Mitchell Payne, Robin Weineger, Kristy Binkley, Betsy Kreitz, Amanda Moore, Kim Wilgus, Mary Blair, Joan Lutmer, and Lisa Shepherd. And then we have the stipends for the resident educator program. First, for the alternate mentors, two hundred dollars. One thousand dollars for first-year resident educator mentors. Five hundred dollars for the mentors for second-year resident educators. And for third and fourth-year resident educator mentors, two hundred and fifty dollars. And we have addendum number sixteen here is to approve, to accept the resignation of Brent Tippi, Brent Tippi, welding instructor at TriStar.
Question, Dr. Ken, back on item number six. Approve the following personnel to teach extended school year. How long of an extension are there, is this going to be to their contract?
Actually, it goes more off of the student's individual education plan, so that goes for them throughout the summer.
So it'll be?
Most often, the students receive two hours per week.
Okay. Any other questions?
For number seven, do we need to treat that the same way as treating Erica for Bill?
Correct. We'll get down to that in the removal when we get down to letter C. Next, we're asking you to approve resolutions. We have the middle school and high school athletic forms. Items two through seven then are student-parent handbooks for the primary, elementary, intermediate, middle, high school, and the TriStar buildings. Number eight, approval of fees for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one school year, K to two, actually K through three would be seventy five dollars per student. Fifth grade sixty, sixth grade seventy, seventh grade seventy-three, eighth grade eighty-three. Now, in the middle school, the band students add ten dollars, and the choir students would also add ten dollars to the fees. The high school fees and TriStar lab fees are different depending on the student's schedule and what courses they are signed up for. Number nine, we're asking you to approve the athletic trainer contracts. That's with Bob Hibner's group, same cost, fifteen thousand dollars per year. Bob has shared that he planned on having the same trainer here at Salina Alley right. Number ten, we're asking you to approve locally what the OHSAA has done across the state as far as eligibility rules, that all students entering grade seven through twelve will be eligible for the two thousand and twenty fall sports season as far as academic eligibility is concerned. Now do be aware, the first eligibility check is September tenth, so they have until that time to get themselves off to a good start and remain eligible for the athletics. Number eleven, we're asking you to approve the change of the Salina High School band overnight trip to Walt Disney World in Florida, changing from November twentieth through the twenty-fifth, the new date March ninth through the fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one.
Questions regarding resolutions? I do, actually, Dr. Schmeizing, number one and kind of ten go together with the OHSAA. I know that we canceled physicals because we couldn't get physicians to conduct the physicals, is that correct?
That is correct. The free physicals, that is not happening here in July. So we have encouraged all those athletes to go out, make contact with their private physicians to get those physicals.
Is it possible that that could be rescheduled so that a kid could get a free physical and still compete? I just think that if they have to go out and pay for their own, it's going to be kind of prohibitive to some kids.
Yeah, I think there'd be a problem with that, that you would have to pick and choose which students would come through. Because of the social distancing requirement, we used to have up to over two hundred kids in the middle school, so if you're doing that in a one-day block, you might be down to being able to do it for perhaps fifty kids? So then how are you going to select it? Be a lottery draw or? And I'm not sure that the doctors would be comfortable being placed in that environment either.
I just wonder what kind of effect that will have on participation. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm going back under personnel if I may. The family consumer physician, Michelle Langmeyer.
Yes.
Are we refilling that at this time or where are we at?
We are not. That's almost with part of the budget cuts and adding the acquisition.
Michelle Langmeyer's okay.
It's kind of balanced off in that respect.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Head Start report?
Under the Head Start reports, first, that was attachment thirteen, that included some of the items that we previously covered, but Amy will get to that. The second, number two, we're asking approval for the submissions of the CARES Act grant summer transition program through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act of two thousand and twenty. And under number three, approval of the purchase of a Zono sanitizing machine not to exceed to twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in accordance with the guidance provided. Ms. Esser?
Would you explain what that thing is real quick, Dr. Ken? The Zono sanitized machine?
I'll let Amy go ahead with that.
There you go.
So the Zono sanitizing machine is, to look at it, it looks like, but what it is, is it's a sanitizing machine. It takes anywhere from thirty minutes to ninety minutes, depending on what you're sanitizing, and it sanitizes all surfaces. So we can sanitize our tech and we can sanitize folks in the funds room. And you just put it on these little shelving trays, put it in there, lock it, turn it on, and off you go. The reason why I need your approval is because the amount of the cost. So under federal guidelines, any purchase that I make that's five thousand dollars or more required for approval. Under the CARES Act, they lighten some of those regulations where I would have also had to receive permission from Chicago, the Office of Head Start. But because of the unique situation with COVID, that was moved up to twenty-five thousand. So I can make this purchase without getting their permission, but I need your permission to make that. That's why it says up to twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
That's why I wanted it to be twenty-four nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Is this machine coming about from COVID? I mean, is it all stemming from COVID that we, that you're looking at this machine?
Yes, but the beautiful thing about the Zono machine is that even when COVID is long gone and over, this is a machine we can use as a hot box for lights and bedbugs. So it will have a long duration life for us.
But it's pretty small.
No, this is the size of like, like one of our refrigerators in the kitchen, but it only runs off of a hundred and ten volt for air. So you can just plug it into the wall and it can just go.
And just use it all day long if necessary.
Yes, and that's our intention, because you have to constantly be, because our children are touching so many things, we are constantly moving them in and out. So this is an easy way to do it while the kids are still in session.
And this is required as part of the CARES Act?
The cleaning and sanitizing recommendations and requirements come from CBC, they come from Ohio Department of Health, they come from our licensing agents. So when you have small children, to keep down the possibility of spreading the virus, we are going to be cleaning constantly. The CARES Act just gave us the money that allows us to make these purchases.
Interesting. Anyone else?
You've got a spot I'll pick out for it and?
Yeah, the nurse ones all decided.
That's good. It's going to be used a lot, I would imagine.
Yes, yes. So this month, I feel like I gave you a lot in the Head Start report. So just outside of my normal report, you also have our self-assessment report, and I won't read through that. Doug participated on the team with me, so she can feel free to share with that, but that is also within that report. The CARES Act is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, and Head Start received seven hundred and fifty million dollars of that overall funding that went throughout the nation. So in Ohio, we got twenty-five million dollars, our program got a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So we were able to build a four-week summer bridge program. We're going to serve sixteen kids. We are going to have eight children in a classroom with three education staff. In the classroom, two are responsible for direct service, one is going around cleaning and switching out and all that. The teachers picked a camp thing, so they're not even called teachers, they're camp counselors. And we have a camp coordinator and we have a camp cook. So our team this summer outside of the admin group is just educators and our cook. We were able to put this together and run this for these kids. They'll get seventy-five hours worth of instruction. We give some of the CARES Act money to basically, we are trying to convert the playground into an outside classroom. So you'll see that over the next couple of weeks, the things that pop up on a playground because we're trying to, as much as we can, whether permitting, have the kids outside in a classroom setting because it's summer. But we're focusing on literacy and to help them with some pre-teenage skills. So also in your packet, there is the overall budget for that one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and a breakdown into different object categories where we intend to spend there. So the Zono machine is part of that as well, ongoing purchasing of disposable supplies like the masks and the gloves and things like that, and all the cleaning stuff is in there as well. And then just long-term different things that we could purchase, like we upgraded technology in case that we need to do some distance learning and things like that. And then obviously the classroom supplies, because we had to buy more so you can switch out and clean and things like that, so.
So the state of Ohio, twenty-five million dollars for Head Start, was it divided? What's the formula?
So it started out where the money was divided into two pots of money, but as we all have seen, every state did something different in regards to how you were going to open and what were your regulations going to be. So the Office of Head Start came back and did a new funding formula. So it's roughly about eight hundred and seventy-five dollars per student for your full enrollment. So our full enrollment's a hundred and fifty-eight at eight seventy-five, it's roughly a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
So then we were able to build a program that we could make work for the summer transition and then utilize those dollars for other things that we needed for COVID.
You do. Mrs. Esser?
There is also in, there is a policy in here. So because the CARES Act money is in response to an extraordinary event, I don't know how else to say that, some of our rules and regulations when it comes to Head Start, they had to make flexible because it just didn't fit with what we were trying to do. So one of those things was being able to offer our staff different wages outside their normal wage scale. So that's why there was the request for you to approve for everybody to be, get twenty dollars an hour for the summer. It's a little bit more than head teacher, but we are asking people to do things out of their normal scope of work. So we felt that that was a fair amount for them to come in during a time where it would normally be off. And so there's a policy also in the packet that addresses that, because I had to write a policy to address it.
So your camp, what days is it and what hours is it?
It is July seventh, and it ends at the end of July, I believe, July thirty-first. Except for the very first week, it runs Monday through Thursday, but that first week, it'll be Tuesday through Thursday, and it's eight to one.
Okay.
And it's all self-transport, there's no busing, and the kids will get breakfast and lunch while they're here.
Okay.
They're also going to get, the education team is working on, it's kind of like at home lesson planning, that's what we had to do at the end of the year. So parents will get packets of information to supplement what they're learning in the classroom. Because they, there will be about a three-week break between, in the bar program and when school goes into session.
How many, how many children did you say, a hundred and thirty-eight?
We serve a hundred and fifty-eight, but for this program, the summer program, we're going to serve sixteen.
How were those chosen or?
Under this specific funding guidance letter, you could only pick from your kids who were going on to kindergarten, and they could or they didn't have to be on an IP, but they really wanted us to target some of those intervention kids. So we really did that, and then we just called parents up and we said, can you self-transport? Are you interested in this? It's a five-hour program, so it's a little bit different, you know, depending on work schedules, so we were able to narrow it down to a smaller.
Thank you, Mrs. Esser. Anyone else? Dr. Ken, are you going to do a TriStar report?
We don't really have a TriStar report, although the house auction is this Thursday evening. I believe it starts at seven PM. That's out across from the TriStar site. So again, any interested folks should get in touch with Tim Buscher out at TriStar ahead of time, so we make sure we have plenty of space for the individuals that will be out there bidding.
Dr. Ken, do you know if there's been any interest expressed in purchasing the house?
At least two, yes.
Good.
It looks really nice.
Is there an online site that we can look this up, see the floor plan plans and the building and all that? Is that?
If you go to the TriStar site.
And this right there.
Yes.
I haven't seen it yet. Okay, removal from items from the consensus agenda?
I'd like to remove C seven, please.
Louder, six and seven?
C seven.
C seven, gotcha. Okay. And then? Dr. Ken, for my daughter there, since it's in other business, I wouldn't have to remove it, correct? I could just abstain if I choose.
That is correct at that time, so it's not part of the consensus agenda.
Right, okay. C seven will be removed. Approval of remaining consensus agenda items? Mrs. Voorhees.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich.
Aye.
Mr. Sal.
Yes.
Action on C seven?
Do we need a motion?
We do.
I'll make a motion to remove that.
Thank you. Need a second, please?
I'll second.
Mrs. Gingrich, Mr. Huber. Mrs. Gingrich.
Aye.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees.
I'm standing.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mr. Sal.
Yes.
And we have the other business.
Need a second, please?
I'll second.
Mrs. Gingrich, Mr. Huber?
Mrs. Gingrich?
Aye.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Abstain.
Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Sell?
Yes.
Then we have the other business, asking you to approve a stipend payment to the resident educator committee for Erica Dreis. And number two, approve the stipend payment for the third and fourth-year resident educator program. Erica Dreis was actually a mentor for two individuals.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Mr. Huber, Mrs. Voorhees? Roll call, please.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich?
Aye.
Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Sell?
Abstain. Any informational items for us, Dr. Ken?
We are moving forward for the June 26, 8:00 PM graduation ceremony out on the field under the lights. So that is a go. If we do happen to have to postpone due to rain, postponement dates would be the following morning at 10:30.
Where do we need to go?
We will need to report to the field. We're not reporting, coming together as a group anyplace. So we will have assigned seats, everyone, including the audience. They'll all have assigned seats so we can all maintain that social distancing.
Are we in the stands, or will we be on the?
We're going to be on the field?
I believe we will be on the field.
So on the south end, I would imagine, correct? Students are facing south.
That's how I understand it. Be looking for a video that will be coming out from the high school that will be showing an explanation.
But more board members will be seated together, is that the plan?
That's how I understand it. Together, but at least six feet apart, correct?
Not a problem.
Is this going to shorten the ceremony?
Because of the PA system and the setup the way it is, I would think that the ceremony will still probably be close to an hour and a half.
They're still doing the salutatorian valedictorian speeches. They're just not having the kids actually physically come up and receive their diplomas, correct? Everything else is?
Right, everything will already be at their seats for them.
So that'll just, whatever time that takes?
Right. I think Mr. Sell knows though, from doing the football announcing, when you're speaking into that speaker that goes across the stadium, you have to slow down your speech to make it clear for people seeing, being seated all across and all around the stadium.
This will be fun.
Do we have a pretty good number now that people say they'll be able to make it?
There was a survey put out, again, going back to the survey, where over 95% of the kids were wanting to wait to do this. I would say we probably have close to 95% of the kids participating.
Earlier in the summer, there was a discussion about still having a prom. Has that gone away with the the strict requirements by the state health director?
Right, even with weddings, I think there's a problem with dancing. So I would say if things would open up, that could be a possibility as we go into next year, where there could be a possibility of looking at that on a date when many of those that go off to college would be available to come back and be in Salina. Where that has been talked about, I'm not sure of the overall interest of the students, what they'll have with that at that point.
If it's okay, I'd like to take a minute to recognize, and I believe it's Jonathan Williams that's doing it, the, on the high school webpage or whatever, that they're recognizing all the seniors. I think that's great to see that they've all taken their pictures and they're all at least being recognized where people can see them. So I thought that was really neat.
That is great.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yes.
Thank you. A lot of effort on behalf of the high school teachers to go out and deliver those. So thank you to the high school staff for undertaking that as well, yes.
Also, did I miss, or has it been published, the high school honor roll? Has that been in the standard or?
I haven't seen it in the standard. It has been posted though on some of the social media venues.
And I saw C. Henry's, and I wanted Salinas in the paper. If we can do that, I think it would be good for Grandma.
They've done a nice job this year. This is the first one they're going to run. At least I feel so.
Any other informational items from anyone? If not, thank you. We stay on the journey.